Thank you, Jordan. Madam Chair, members of the Commission and staff and those in attendance, my name is Mark Primar. Along with Ray Pantlake and other people in the audience here, we're one of many in the Ultimate Team Project, which is about creating community. And what we'd like to share with you today is where we are with select graphics that are a part of a slide deck that we could walk through, to share with you our way of thinking, largely as a result of a lot of homework on our part that Ray will be really good at describing the process that we went through. But equally important, we just had our second community workshop last week. This was a good time to reflect on not only the first one that we had about a year and a half ago, but the more recent one. So what we'd like to do is walk you through these exhibits. There are hard copies in front of you as well. To go over the basics, Orange Hill is 933 acres. It's in the southern section of John's Island. This first graphic that's represented on the screen reflects its location, which is between Bo Hickett Road and River Road. And to help you out, let's see, I don't know if this laser will work, if you can read it, but this is Bo Hickett Road, right there. This is River Road. This is the intersection that then leads into Betsy Carrison, right here. And from Betsy Carrison, up this way to Bo Hickett, or this way to River Road, it's about a mile, both ways, from that intersection. The original planned development district, which exists right now, empower the site with entitlements that are very specific that we're going to go through in just a minute. That was done with your recommendation and oversight in the process, and then the final vote by County Council in 2005. In 2008, and that development didn't proceed for any number of reasons, but in 2008, Kiowa Partners purchased the 721 acres of the PD. The PD is 721 acres, and an adjacent piece of property, which is a conservation tract of 212. We are before you today to seek a recommendation of approval, once we formally submit for a new PD, and we'd like to share with you why we think a new PD would be more appropriate for this setting. The next slide begins that process. This compares and contrasts with the existing entitlements on the left side of this page with our proposal on the right side. What we have below each are some callouts of particular standards that we would show how it's different from one to the other. Our last community workshop, there were several comments by attendees, I think one is in the room, that suggested it's better to show like-kind acreages for what would be the existing versus what's proposed. And the reason I say that is, our proposal has more acreage in it, of which there is not going to be any development on that additional acreage, the conservation tract. It wouldn't be fair to represent lowering densities and so forth, because the math would be not equivalent. So if I could walk you through the different standards below, and then share with you some additional graphics. By way of example, the community area of the existing PD is 721 acres. We only show, for this comparison purposes, an equivalent 721 acres. We aren't showing the math of the additional conservation tract, because that won't be developed, but it will play an important role in our creation of a community. The Highland acreage for both is 535. The exist—this is an important factor, the next one. The existing planned development district allows for up to 181 residential units. And they're single-family detached, by the way. No proposal has been for multifamily or attached housing. We are proposing a development that has 120. It limits it to 120, based largely on a lot of homework that we've done over the past three years. The primary road entrance for the existing entitlement is Bo Hickett Road. It's actually right in the middle of the site, right in that location, right if you're—I know a lot of people in this room are familiar with going Bo Hickett. Right where that bend is, in terms of the long run of Bo Hickett and that bend in the road. We are proposing that the entry road be on River Road. And the basis for that is a lot of traffic analysis in terms of flow patterns of existing and anticipated traffic, that we think it would be better for everyone, not just the proposal on our part, but for the greater community, to have the primary entrance on River Road. And the only connections that we would have on Bo Hickett are utility tract, which really limits the number of people, because it's a utility tract, and an emergency entrance point where there exists a location right now. And I'll go over that in terms of the specifics of that. The existing entitlements, the Bo Hickett Road buffer is 75 to 100 feet. We see a basis, because of the land use pattern alternatives that we're proposing, of 100 to 300 feet, depending upon location. Open space requirements, or not requirements, but callouts. When you compare the large home sites that are the orange on the existing development, where they have many large home sites, we think there's a better direction of having more modest-sized home sites, in deference to have more open space, more natural areas. Here's an important factor that we'll go through when we go through the basics of the plan, the road infrastructure. The existing PD has 7.2 miles of roadway, because the roadway and the golf course are like, the golf courses and residential areas that were built in the 80s and 90s, where the golf course and the residential is all intertwined. It puts a lot of pressure on expanding road construction. We're taking an approach, it's sort of old-school, which is the golf course is a core golf course. It doesn't have a residential winding all the way through it. That way, the combination of that strategy plus lowering density, we have 2.8 miles less roadway and impact on the natural environment. The residential courses I just described, they're very different. It's more familiar to most of the golf courses you see in the greater three-county area. We're proposing a throwback, which is a golf course that is just golf, and it doesn't have residential winding through it. And then Ray will be able to describe to you how we're handling wastewater treatment, which is on-site, in terms of that. So let me go through the others a little bit more quickly, because I know there's a shot clock with this. The next slide is the conceptual master plan, in which the key elements are the golf course that I just described, which is in the upper area, right in here, largely free of any residential, and then a lot of open space throughout, in terms of, you know, actually when you walk the property and you feel the topo, the subtleties of the topo and the tree canopies and how the wetlands interact, it's logical that, you know, centuries and centuries ago, these were old dune fields. So you can feel the rhythm of the land and the tree canopy and the wetlands from that. So we spend a lot of time doing that, and we never stop doing it. And then the residential below. And then this is where the entry road would be. See if I can—oh, sorry. This is called an index map with the previous sketch, which makes all the callouts for assignment for specific land use more precise. So the combination of the graphic that we just shared with you and this, if the project were to go forward, it makes it easier to keep tight track of assignment for land uses, in terms of the precision of this. This slide begins to express the nature of the residential. Remember, we're lowering densities quite a bit, in terms of the density pattern. But we're not only lowering densities, we're making the home sites more modest in size. Instead of large compound parcels, which inherently, there's nothing wrong with that, but our approach is to defer to more common property, natural areas, untouched areas, rather than to have them controlled by individuals. And we are proposing essentially three residential types, in terms of home site sizing. More modest, sort of mid-range, and a handful that are more in the—they're large by this standard, but relatively small by John's Island standards. This is a—this slide shows the road pattern, the primary infrastructure. And if you were to compare and contrast the road network with the existing PD, which wanders throughout the property, what we're trying to do is make it more modest, touch as little bit as possible. That's why our road length is substantially less going forward. Ray, this might be a good time for you to maybe talk a little bit about how we handle master drainage, too.
Yes, and let me add, there are—there is a team of engineers with Thomas and Hutton Engineering Company that have been working on this project, and they range in specialties from stormwater to wastewater. Tony Woody is here, Mark Yodas, and Michelle Gritschburg, and John Marsher. And so, in terms of the wastewater, we've been advised to use a membrane bioreactor, and it may be one of the first ones, maybe in the county, not really sure, but it treats wastewater to a level, it's called tertiary treatment, and it can actually exceed drinking water standards. And the reason we want to do that is because any of the wastewater that gets treated, we're actually going to try to capture that into the irrigation pump station, storage tank for the golf course irrigation. So it's actually a reclaimed water facility that we're proposing.
So the strongest point of view on that is that we're trying to keep all of these impacts within the property, and more efficiently reuse it. So the idea of solving multiple problems with a singular solution, that's an optimizing way or an efficient way to proceed. The next slide is phasing. What we see are—it's a hierarchy. So there are two primary phases, and the more intense color, which is shown to the left on the—I'm losing my battery here, of the phasing in this area starts with the golf course and the clubhouse grounds associated with the golf course, maintenance area, the utility tract, and then a sampling of those three residential types that we shared earlier on, a little bit of each. Each of those would have sub-phases to them that would be responding to market conditions. Although we would open with the golf course, some of the golf cottages, and maybe some of the lakeside cottages, the idea is to monitor that, not get out too far, or not do so little that people don't understand what you're trying to do. We want to monitor that. We're building upon decades of experience, both at Kiowa and other locations, of how to best release property in a responsible way, that, again, you begin to learn something at the end of each of the sub-phases. And then Phase Two would be the balance of the property. Although it's hard to point out in this graphic, on the example that you have in front of you, there's a callout of how much recreation and natural area is a part of each of the phases. And although it wasn't intended this way, it's about 50/50, in terms of what would be part of the first phase versus the second phase. This sketch, or exhibit, really begins to address the aesthetic expression of the residential neighborhood. Residential is a component of this, but although it might be difficult to see in some of these images, it's woven tightly with the natural environment. Designing with nature is sort of our lead story. So we go to great extent, in fact, I think we've done the most intense tree survey that probably is in the county. We've done a tree survey of all the species and size of trees on the entirety of the property, the core property. The reason we think that's important, it begins to give a running start, as to the nature of how you design homes to weave within the natural environment. And we mean that literally. There's nothing inherently wrong with a lot of the houses on John's Island, especially in the newer subdivisions, being light or white, painted. There's nothing inherently wrong with that. Our approach is slightly different, which is it should recede into the natural environment. So natural materials, mid-tones, the scale of the houses are limited to a story and a half, of which the half-story is embedded within the roof form. Each of those choices begin to merge how the architecture can be responsibly positioned on the site. This slide is important because the lead story, again, is the natural environment, how much is retained or enhanced. The golf course, when you do a golf course, a core golf course, you have greater opportunity to position fairways through openings, natural openings. When you're doing it with residential, the golf course gets stuck and more trees come out, whereas this is a technique which will retain considerable number of trees. Bo Welling, the golf course architect, and Charlie Arrington, who's also in the room, have an enormous amount of experience in sensitively weaving a golf course within a natural setting, and minimizing any disruption, even to the point where, for the golfers in the room, the fairways are not exaggerated, the bunkers are not exaggerated, like some golf courses are, because they weave with the natural setting and the natural topo. I believe this is next to the last slide. This begins to focus on the location of the residential. And as you can see, if you see all the lighter areas, those are all the natural areas. So our lead story is partially driven by as little a touch as possible with as few residential as possible. Remember the hierarchy of, you know, smaller cottage home sites, lakeside, which is sort of medium-sized, and the slightly larger home sites. It's a little hard to see on this graphic, but it might show up on your print. One of the things that we addressed, which I know has been a part of many presentations you've had and just sort of witnessed, is short-term rentals. There's going to be one company, the Kiowa Island Club, which will manage all of this property. In like-kind, the proposal is to limit the number of short-term rentals to no more than 68. And even more importantly, they're located in a very specific geographic area. If you take the existing location, or the proposed location for the clubhouse grounds, right in there, that's sort of the center of the community, where people would gather. A five-minute walk would include those 68 units. This would encourage people to get out of their cars and bike or walk. Why fit five minutes? Well, that's about as far as Americans will go before they feel compelled to get into a car. But that's the idea, is that people would comfortably be able to walk to that location. And again, one company would manage the entirety of the short-term rental experience. The last slide is a recall of the slide that we started with. Our proposal, that we want to continue to work with the staff and the community with, is to find ways to make the plan a better plan than the existing planned development district. There's nothing inherently wrong with the existing plan, but it begins to put pressure on the very things that we honor, which is the natural environment. We think there's a better way, but the choices that we're proposing, in terms of lowering density, less infrastructure, choices of land uses relative to what naturally would occur as opposed to forced feed, our offering would be that, because of the trip—you know, the traffic locations and so forth for the primary entrance, we take pressure off of development. And when you look at the math, inclusive now of the conservation tract, it comes relatively close in terms of density proposals of the AG8 density, which is one unit per eight acres. We get—we fall into one, like, seven-point-something acres per one unit. We get close to it, which is more consistent with the natural development pattern on John's Island. So I probably took too much time, I apologize, but that's on behalf of an enormous number of professional women and men who've been involved in this project, that they don't sleep at night, because they really like working on this project. So we look forward to a time when we can present more specifics that have been prepared in terms of the text and the callouts that are important to standards. We were talking about standards early in the meeting, to reflect on that. And I'll just stop at that point and offer the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions from commissioners?
Actually, it looks very interesting. I guess I'm just interested to convert, whatever, the conservation tract. You haven't done any, or not taken any development there. Okay, is it your concern for the environment, or is there a physical reason why it's purely conservation?
It was a previous conservation easement on that property, but we thought it was important to bring in to the whole of the holdings, without advancing infrastructure in that location, other than natural trails. When you walk the property, there are natural trails through it.
So the easement is owned by you or...
Yes, yes. But well, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the easement, you might want to describe the easement, I apologize. The property itself is owned by the company, but yeah.
Yeah, this actually came up in our community workshop. We call it the conservancy tract, because at one point, it was actually owned by the nature conservancy. Apparently, there was some permit years ago that required wetland preservation covenants to be placed on them. And that's a little misleading, but it's a tri-party—it was a tri-party covenant between OCRM, the Corps, and the property owner at the time. As well as I understand it, the reason KRA, prior to South Street's involvement, purchased that was, all of this property, with the exception of a stretch on river, had fallen into bankruptcy. So you had to—but the prior developer had acquired that tract, for whatever reason, I don't know. So we were sort of compelled to buy all three tracks that comprised most of the property. But there's not a conservation easement as such, but there are recorded covenants that restrict, basically, to just being able to take care of the property. I think there's one structure that is allowed, and to get to that one structure, whatever it might be, you'd have to use the existing trails and drives to access it.
The easement's in perpetuity?
I'm sorry?
Is it in perpetuity?
Oh, yeah. I mean, unless—one would have to petition, I guess, to have them abandoned, but that is not likely. But I think that drove the reason why Mark said, "Let's only compare apples to apples" in terms of the 2005 PD versus now.
Mr. Delcine?
Yes, as an applicant, just for clarity, are you all just strictly seeking to amend your current PD?
Our objective would be a new, a new PD.
But just to add, companion with that, we are seeking a development agreement with the county.
Okay.
And part of the reason we believe starting fresh is that, through the site analysis that we did that yielded the plan, is a substantive change from the previous one, as opposed to just subtle adjustments. We think the change is worthy of starting fresh with a new PD. Plus, we have all learned more about certain standards that we'd want to incorporate.
Susan?
I have no questions. Do PDs ever expire?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Do planned developments ever expire in the state of South Carolina?
No.
Okay. I'm not sure I understand the legal ownership restrictions on the, what you refer to as the conservancy tract. Can you explain that in a way that I can understand?
Well, I'm a little more familiar with it than you may be. Many times, a project of this scale, you go through a permitting process that involves the Army Corps of Engineers. Such permits, they're federal permits, of course, with the Corps, and they're usually for freshwater wetland impacts. Usually, the outcome of that permitting process, which also has to be certified by the now Bureau of Coastal Management, requires that properties be—wetland properties and wetland buffers be placed in perpetuity in preservation, with some exceptions for drainage or other things. In this case, and the Corps and BCM have what's called model covenants. In this case, it went even further to preserve the entire property, not only the wetlands, but also the uplands. So it's, as I said, it's a little—when you read the document, happy to share it, it's obviously on record, but it covers the entire 212 acres, and it preserves the land and the wetlands.
Should the Corps or OCRM, do they have a new name now? Should they change their regulations? Would that impact this?
I'm not an attorney, but these covenants are in place in perpetuity. And, you know, a few years ago, we sought a modification, but it was related to just fire management, this sort of thing. And it was a pretty rigorous review. Obviously, you had to—you have to have the consistency department of BCM sign off, and the Corps had to sign off. So it's certainly not an easy process.
But it's from a legal perspective. Should the regs with respect to the Corps and all that change, because we've seen that happen in recent memory, would that affect this?
Do you mind restating your question, please?
Yeah. If the Corps changed its regulations, or weakened its requirements with respect to wetlands, I'm assuming this is freshwater wetlands, would that allow this to be—would that change the covenants that he mentions on this?
Without reviewing the documented, it's hard to give a direct answer. My assumption would be that, you know, his separate conservancy tract, those regulations—that property is governed by whatever those documents are, and at the current moment, they are not proposing to develop that. And I believe should they choose to, they would probably have to amend whatever future PD to allow further development on that tract, because right now, they are not proposing any of that. But again, that is without us, you know, going several steps down the line to review all that document and what-if scenarios occur.
Yeah. It just concerns me about future. We've seen things change. I have some other questions, if you would. Are these going to be slab-on-grade fill homes?
Our intent is to keep the profile of the home as low as possible. I wouldn't want to say that it would be slab-on-grade versus some other construction technique, but we're fortunate enough to, because of the topo there, you know, we don't have to elevate buildings. We believe they should be, you know, maybe modestly lifted, but the images that we've shared with you are homes that are more built near grade, as opposed to long runs of stairs.
Okay. How many grand trees must you remove for both the homes and the golf course? Or are you proposing to remove?
We are actually still surveying both grand and protected trees. Now, it's not just a question of just identifying, okay, it's a certain size. We have a PhD-licensed forester that is very carefully, actually going behind our land surveyors, and remeasuring, making sure of its size, DBH, making sure of the precise species, so we know precisely what it may be, not just an oak, right? But what he's also utilizing, and there are different methodologies, I understand, there's no set methodology, as I understand it, the county has, but he's grading each tree. And he's using— And he's using a method, it's a risk assessment that the International Society of Arborists use. And it sort of grew out of, okay, is this tree dangerous kind of thing? And we, if you, they're A through, A through E, E being dead. Grade A is, just in two words, it's indicative of vigorous growth. A B tree is a healthy tree. A C tree is declining health.
But it's so far that you have not been able to apply that regimen to the trees or complete applying that to the trees on the property? Is that correct? That's ongoing?
Well, we have identified most of the grand trees and any sort of number I might give you today until we lodge the formal application. To be honest, we're, our surveyor comes behind some of the areas that the arborist has already looked at, and we find trees that we may or may not, you know, it's 700 and something apers, and he might have missed a two. We're actually still surveying protected trees that are in the type I buffer that runs 75 feet parallel to both River Road and Bo Hickett Road. As you likely know, a tree that's in the right-of-way of Ascenic Road is any tree six inches or greater. And in the buffer, it's any tree eight inches and greater. So, there's a lot of those. Mark had mentioned-
But you're still assessing that.
But the short answer is you don't know the number yet.
Well, we've got some preliminary findings. And I even have a comparative video I'd love to share that gives you sort of a gross visual. Now, we've talked about the conservancy tract there. We have not done any exhaustive surveys because there's practically no development. If there's any development, we're not going to take out a protected or grand tree. But I mentioned the grading and the reason that that's important. In our proposal, yes, we're going to be asking for-
But you don't have that number yet. She's looking for a number. So, you don't have that number yet.
I don't-
Yes or no?
I don't have a total number. But let me just give you-
I think we get the, I think we get the drift. We're still working on it.
I'd love to just tell you about two, just two things that are still preliminary, which we would all understand that a Class A tree, which is vigorous growth and alivo, we surveyed hundreds of those, and 8% of those will need to be removed, physically removed, not encroached upon. The grade B live oaks, 87% of them will all remain. So, I give you that information to, just so you can understand the spirit in which way, the methodology in which way we're looking at this. As you get to the lower grade trees, and I'll note that a D tree is irreparably harmed and it's really on a death sentence. In practice, from what we can see, when the BZA approves a tree variance, they typically don't require mitigation for a D-grade tree. A C-grade tree, as the typical practice has been, that the planning director makes a judgment as to whether or not that tree individually requires mitigation. But in our proposal, every A and B that we physically remove, we're going to be mitigating inch by inch.
Back to you. Mr. Walker, did you want to give us some insight into the conservancy area?
I was going to, and my apologies for taking things out of order. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Cox's question about the covenants and if the regulations change. The difference is, these are recorded covenants, so even if the laws change, the covenants remain.
Okay.
It's like a conservation easement. And sometimes, there's confusion, but these, as Mr. Panalek said, are permanent covenants on the land, enforceable by both OCRM and the Corps.
Which doesn't give me a lot of comfort, but in any event, but it's deeded with the land, it goes with the land.
Right. The covenants are actually more certain and more restrictive than the laws because laws can change. But when the law changes, the covenants stay the same.
That's good. Thank you very much for that clarification. I still have a number of danger trees. What is a danger tree?
Part of our plan, and, when, is there another page that just shows the sketch plan? Well, there you go. If you sort of look at kind of what looks like an intersection, there is an existing Central Electric Power Cooperative main distribution three-phase overhead line that runs-
So, there are trees that are in the way of the utilities?
They're actually outside of the easement, but they have the potential to fall and thus they're deemed danger.
Okay. Would those be graded, even if they're an A tree, would they be graded something else as a consequence, or would they just be?
Any, we've actually identified certain danger trees and included them in the inventory of trees that would be-
I just, I've never heard of a danger tree, so I just-
Yeah, I hadn't either. And we, you know, there's a 75-foot wide easement that by prior easement has to be clear-cut and maintained.
Okay.
We have to protect that.
I got you. When you talk about natural areas, what was your precise recreation and natural areas? Is that area that is left completely undisturbed, or is that lawn or grass for?
The idea of natural areas would be kept in the state that we find them. Absent, you know, healing trees or, you know, like one idea that was posed by a property owner nearby during one of our workshop sessions is to take the tree liner along Bo Hickett Road that is retained and discover ways to enhance that, strengthen the trees in a maintenance program as opposed to just leaving them the way they are.
Could you, can you break out the, you've lumped those two categories together, recreation and natural, which, how much, how many acres of one, how many acres of the other?
We, I don't think we've done that.
I guess is all of that undisturbed acreage then?
No, no, no. The reason the term recreation is in there is fundamentally the golf course.
Right.
So, we could determine the acreage of the golf course and we could do subcategories if what you're proposing is subcategories of areas that have been disturbed but are in the form of ultimately a natural setting, right? And other areas which are not touched. We could work toward differentiating those.
I just think there's a big difference between the two. You know, grass is not the same as an undisturbed natural area in terms of runoff to Bo Hickett Creek or to any adjoining properties. It's not the same.
We have those answers, ma'am.
Okay.
When, if you can find what was called the index sheet, and you-
It's the third one.
Yeah.
And while you're looking for that, can you, and I know there was one of the comments that was concerned about one of the utility ditches or utility facility that was located next to one of the main runoffs into Bo Hickett Creek? My question is, how many gallons, pounds of pesticides and herbicides are required to maintain this golf course?
Ma'am, I do not know that, but let me assure you that for all the resort courses that are in the coastal zone, there are protective measures. The actual normal operation of a golf course maintenance area, you can imagine the equipment comes in, it's got to be washed down. We use a system that recycles the water. It's a closed loop. You bring the equipment in, it gets washed down, there's sediment traps, oil and grease baffles, and there's never a discharge because that water gets filtered and cleaned and then it's used again, and then the same process repeats. There's containment areas for any sort of chemical mixing. The same can be said for the reclaimed water facility, there'll be a way to block that. And the, I could sit down with you and show you our detailed plans that Thomas and I had prepared, but there's a three-cell stormwater retention area that has a sediment four-bay, an area with a floating tubidity curtain to keep siltation out, and a final sort of micro pool to try to strain very fine sediments. And it's state-of-the-art.
I just know that DEHAC with wastewater, stormwater, I think they require you to manage, what, the first half-inch, one-inch of rain, and we routinely see-
Charleston County Public Works with DES now.
Right.
Since we started, the design of this project, we're well down the road with the Public Works Department with our stormwater master plan. The model that DEHAC and county requires will show a reduction in sediments, a reduction in phosphorus, nitrogen, and the bacteria that gets monitored in the creeks, opening-close shellfish. All of that is reduced by the introduction of not only this one retention, but the 13 other stormwater lagoons that treat the water and provide the nutrient uptake so there's no pollution sources.
Okay, thank you.
If I could address one of the questions you had of how do you differentiate natural versus recreation and so forth? So, the exhibit that's up on the page right now, which is page four on your hard copy, it's called a Sketch Plan Index. This is an attempt to be more definitive of subcategories. Now, neither Ray or I can tell you what the acreage is right now other than a general assignment and so forth, but this is, this is the beginnings of what I think would be an answer to your question of how do you differentiate between recreation areas versus natural areas?
And I do appreciate the effort, but there's a number of these that are sort of similar, and I'm old and my eyes are not so good, so can you, like the largest area in the center, once you get in the entrance and you've got this cross-hatch area, I don't know which one that is.
We can do a better job of graphic expression.
I'm sure it's difficult to come up with things that look radically different, but-
We can find a way.
I just, lawn and golf course is not the same as undisturbed natural area, and that's the distinction I'm looking for.
So, for example, let's say the individual home sites, which are not included as a part of a recreation or natural area, the individual home site.
Are not.
We have established standards in other neighborhoods on Kiowa or Casique where we have landscape standards for not only ground coverage and the normal things of impact, but the nature of the landscape that might have been disturbed and what you would replace it with, not lawn, but indigenous species and so forth. So, when we, there is a point in exercising, hopefully, the ultimate PD, before any building permits are issued, we have to establish refined architectural guidelines, which would include landscape guidelines. Our effort here would be even more definitive to a natural landscape around a home as opposed to a lawn.
Good, thank you.
If I could just add, at a minimum, the actual wetlands and our proposed adjacent wetland buffers stay in a true, in a true natural state. And that's part of the buildup of the recreation and natural areas. Included also are the lagoons. And so, it's, it is kind of summed up together, rolled up into that one class, but we have a breakout. And if you want to stick around, I'll show you the breakout.
I'll stick around, thank you.
I'm going to pile on a little bit to you. All right. So, if you go to slide five, in the images that are on the left, if you go to, and this is our architectural expression, but the bottom image shows a lagoon with natural vegetation around the edge. The entirety of that lagoon and vegetation was created. So, we use our examples of the decades of, you know, managing wastewater or stormwater runoff, but do it in a way that it isn't just mowed grass right down to the edge, that within a two- or three-year period, it looks like it was always like this, for the same reason I believe you're asking the question about grass on that.
Great. Yeah, just a quick question for you guys as well, and something that I'd like to see, just that would really be of assistance to me. For example, you've got in your current PUD, a residential golf course. So, for me, to understand what that acreage is on the residential golf course as compared to what the acreage would be under the new proposed PUD, to give a balance of, you know, what the difference is. And then also, maybe if there could be a graphic, and correct me, maybe it's in there and I missed it, that kind of shows me what the net zero is. So, we've got 721 acres from an existing PUD. We've now got, I guess there's been an accumulation of muss, of more land, we've got 933 acres, so we've got a difference of 212 acres. What is the impact of that 212 acres on top of, you know, what was already entitled under your existing PUD?
Yeah, the 212 acres is this sort of appendage to the northeast, if you orient it to the plan. And I don't know when, if you can go back to-
So, would that be a net zero? There's no impact to it on densities or anything like that?
No impact. There's-
It's just more land?
It's just more land. As I said, I believe the circumstance that we came to own it was that there were two main tracts that were the original PUD, and a developer had purchased those, and he purchased that conservancy tract from the nature conservancy.
Okay.
He went bankrupt, and our company, there were three separate transactions, and we bought all three presumably because these were all the assets in bankruptcy.
Is the Corps golf course much larger than the residential golf course?
I don't really know much, or don't know specifics, but I, one of the things that's in our tabulation is that the irrigated area of the golf course, and that includes the practice range, there's a small little kind of par-three short course off to the southeast, is 115 acres. So, I don't know that we've ever bothered with even measuring.
We've never done a comparison of the playing surface of both golf courses. Because we have more, we have far more detail on this course than the other, which was sort of the hand drawing.
So, where would, from a environmental impact, where would you all say that there's more impact to the, to the ground from your first PUD or from this one as related to the golf course?
All right. Setting aside the 212, if you look closely at the comparative slide, there is residential or developed land, I think it's 281 acres. If you look closely at our plan, there's only 100 acres devoted to residential. That's a significant difference that is far less impactful. Mark showed the residential clusters, which are tightly and well-defined, 100 acres out of 721, if you want to use that as the primary-
I think the most dramatic one, to answer your question, in addition to those, is 2.8 miles less roads, road length.
And that road now is coming off a river road as opposed to what was Bo Hickett, correct? Or Betskaris?
Well, the entrance is.
Entrance?
Yes, but what I, that's correct. But what I'm saying is the internal road system of our proposal is 2.8 miles less than the existing PD. Now, imagine, you know, a 50-foot right-of-way with a, I don't know what the minimum standard is, but 20 or 22 feet or might be 24-feet-wide road for 2.8 miles doesn't exist now in our proposal. And that's, that would be a positive impact for retention of natural areas.
Did you guys quantitate the, let's say, amount of grand trees that perhaps are being saved in that 2.8 miles?
We haven't figured that precise thing. We-
It'd be great to know.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, good, good point. Just speaking of the roadways, one of the things that, as we looked over the current county standards as part of our development agreement, we're seeking certain- county standards, as part of our development agreement, we're seeking certain different standards. Public Works requires a 22-foot wide paved road. All of the, for the most part, all of the neighborhood roads on Kiowa Island and in our neighboring community, Casique, are 20 feet wide. So that's one thing, that's, that's two feet, but that's, that adds up over miles. Another aspect is the, the private or public road standards would require dual concrete walkways on both sides. Akind of how we've done our other communities, we, we don't want to do that. We want to do a paved road, a grass well to trap the stormwater sediment, and then do meandering trails that could be of all types, mulch to eight-foot wide bike pass. But we're not replicating this sort of standard, you know, clear cut swath that would take for a 22-foot wide road, a swale, and then, and then two concrete sidewalks.
Would the general public have any access to come in and enjoy any of the features within Orange Hill?
There, yeah, I don't know if wind can blow up, can blow up, but right at River Road, there's a commercial use that we've identified, which is envisioned as a produce kind of farm stand kind of place that would also be a restaurant, up to 5,000.
The direct answer is the majority of this is a private club for property owners and members, and with a gate. The general public wouldn't have access to the majority of this holding. The area that Ray's talking about is an area of consideration out, it's shown right now on the screen, where a nursery operation, a farm stand, a modest restaurant, that would have public access. There's been a request by several property owners of a possibility of a playground for the greater community. We're assessing that. Our thoughts on that would be, it would be great if it were connected to an islandwide trail system, which is probably largely absent right now. We probably have pieces of it, so maybe there's the beginnings of something like that. But the direct answer is the majority of what we're proposing is a private club with a security gate to it.
But you're open to expand an offering to the, to the public community? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm saying it's a private club with restricted access.
Okay.
For the property owners and the members, which is what we've done in numerous locations like Casique is that, on Johns Island, or excuse me, on Seabrook Island.
Just one comment, I just want to say I appreciate what you guys are doing here, comparing the two plots of what is already entitled and what you're moving it to. Just going forward, it might be helpful, as what's been alluded to, is when you get into the grand trees and entitlements, maybe noting the comparison of what the impacts would be under the existing, plus what you want to do going forward, because on, on the surface, it looks greatly scaled down, so we, might be helpful, appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Stephen Haynesworth.
I'm Stephen Haynesworth, and I live right across Bo Hickett Road, where the two ditches run, run through our property, and that, that area, Orange Hill, I farmed when I was, when I was a teenager, I worked on that farm there, I know that land very well. I've also lived across the river, across the road 40 years, and that easement goes through our property and drains out into Bo Hickett, and we swim there. I've got kids, my grandkids, we swim in there all the time. So our concern was the water quality coming out of there, and they've done a wonderful job, and they've offered to, to share more with us, and, and we appreciate that. Under their area-wide flooding and water quality, they talk about significant reduction of the water going out there, and that would be key, because the oysters have been destroyed out there. 50 years ago, all the farmers dug ditches so they could drain the swamp and plant tomatoes and stuff. We need to try to get rid of all those ditches going out into the, into the Bo Hickett. Our concern was runoff, they've addressed a lot of those issues with them, and they've offered to, to show us the plans of, of that waste treatment area and their maintenance area, which is right across the road from where we live. One other suggestion would be move that back a little bit, Bo Hickett Road, there's talk about widening it, that area would not be widened, but in the future, it probably will need to be widened, so if we could move that back and keep, you know, a bigger buffer, in the future, if we could keep that 100-foot buffer, that would be, be wonderful. But we're the ones that wrote that, that note about the wastewater, and we're getting answers, so that, you know, we'll keep you in touch with that. But they've been very cooperative, they've shared information with us, and they've offered to show us a couple of their other plans, so thank you.
Thank you. John Zolgare.
John Zolgare, representing the Johns Island Task Force, 5528 Frisco Lane. Good seeing you all again today, and welcome, Mr. Lassane. The, you know, we haven't yet seen the, the plan development or development agreements document, so we're going to reserve judgment on that. But we do, we are glad to see the reduction in the number of houses and the reduction in the amount of impervious surfaces. But my, one of my understandings is that the, the key reasons for a development agreement, because right now there's not a development agreement, just a plan development document, is so they can, they don't have to go before the BZA to cut down the trees, and that was, that's been a big issue. And all, but it also is part of that, they're going to pay it into an affordable housing fund, so those are just kind of things to keep in the back of your mind as you see this. You know, the applicant, as I mentioned, recently had a session on Johns Island, it was very well attended, they did a great job of listening and so forth, but out of that, there came several things that I think the community, as well as the task force, recommend there be some changes. And we sent that to the applicant, we sent it to Chairperson Floyd, as well as to the commissioner, the planning department folks. So just real quick, I'll go over those, you know, turn lanes on, on River Road, you know, traffic is the biggest issue there is on there. Talking about the trees, they've spent a lot of time on trees, but I think, you know, whenever I've really worked with developers, and you ask them to just go one more time, they end up saving more trees. So I think we could, they could go back and save some more trees. Someone mentioned Bo Hickett Road, every now and then a branch falls down and hits a car that's driving down there, I think on that long stretch of Bo Hickett Road, if they were to maintain that, that'd be fantastic for the community. Tree wells, we all know that in the end, tree wells, trees tend not to survive in tree wells, they should not have any tree wells in the property. We mentioned, the gentleman just before me talked about the runoff and so forth, and the applicant did mention about all the designs they're doing, and I'm sure you'll give me more time, all the designs they're doing. I think that's great, but it's a test, it's a trust but verify, right? Okay, you have a design, but how do you really know the design is actually going to do that? So what we're recommending is that they, they, they check the, at the outfalls, the water flow rates, in other words, you know, if it's half an inch versus a two-inch rainfall, and the, the water quality, and actually publish those. Again, we believe them, just trust but verify. And then there's three things in terms of benefits to Johns Island, they're asking a lot here, they're going to ask for a lot of trees to be cut down, and as, as part of that, there's going to be mitigation, they're going to have to pay into a mitigation fund. We really think, as part of the development agreement, that those, that mitigation fund be used solely for Johns Island. I'll give Wadmala too, but, you know, in terms of, there's no sense that the impact is on Johns Island and it goes to Mount Pleasant, nothing wrong with Mount Pleasant. Same way with the affordable housing fund, I understand it's a significant amount of money. Again, that'd be great if that were to be spent on Johns Island or in Wadmala. Right now, you know, that's along Bo Hickett Road, that's a big issue with all the workforce folks going from off-island down to Kiowa and Seabrook, so having that on island will actually help traffic, which is, of course, the number one issue. And I know that Habitat, Sea Island Habitat for Humanity is a great opportunity for that, they do a great job on the island, they're right now, actually doing a project right now that I think you all approved. And then there was mentioned finally that on River Road, they're talking about a restaurant or a farm stand, quite frankly, I don't think anybody really cares about that, but someone then didn't mention something like a playground, something that actually could help the folks on the island. And indeed, that would be the only part that'd be open to the public, the rest of it is a gated community. So we encourage the applicant and the planning commission to work through this and get it codified in the planning development and development agreement documents, because again, seen too many times, I'm not saying it all with this developer, but a lot of developers will prime stuff upfront, and then when it comes to it, it's not actually in the document. So they could get those seven things in there, that'd be fantastic, and we look forward to the, the counting of the number of trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to Storybrooke Farm. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Plan Development Workshop for Storybrooke Farms' Plan Development, and Mr. Lingan is going to present.
I'm going to excuse myself for this one.
Okay, is it, are you involved in it?
Oh, yeah, Mark, does he have need to announce? I'll raise a voice, we accuse ourselves.
Don't forget you've got to fill out a form. Oh, you did, okay.
You're going to announce it.
Mr. Legree is going to excuse himself because he's.
Lassane.
Lassane. I'm from Johns Island. Mr. Lassane is going to excuse himself.
Recuse himself.
Recuse himself.
Yes.
Whatever. Because, excuse and recuse. Okay. He's not here.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Lingan, and I am the entitlement manager for NVR, the applicant for Storybrooke Farm. I have a few folks with me, just want to introduce, Amy Chico, she is the senior vice president at HLA, the engineer for this project, and Brady Cashin is the general manager of land for NVR. So we are early in the process, obviously, we've been gathering some information and meeting with a lot of the neighbors. This site is off of Bee's Ferry Road at the intersection of Bee's Ferry and Bear Swamp. And I'm going to kind of, my presentation's going to run pretty high level and kind of drill down into some of the specifics as we get into it, and kind of start with just West Ashley as a whole. You know, West Ashley's kind of median sales price for housing has steadily increased, as you all may be aware. I think in 2024, it was upwards of $550,000 for a median sales price for single family. And something that Storybrooke Farm is intending to provide is both attainable and workforce housing. We're proposing a condominium community here, and all of the units will be for sale, there will be no rental. There will be 144 total units in the development, and the goal is to offer a price point that's, like I said, attainable, you know, somewhere in the, in the 300s being, being a starting price. There's a lot of supply in this marketplace that is 500, 600,000 dollars, and, and just not frankly attainable for existing residents of West Ashley, you know, newcomers, folks looking to move up into their first home, out of an apartment, or folks that are looking to downsize, kind of get rid of the lawn maintenance and live somewhere safe and convenient to shopping, retail, work, you know, family. So just wanted to set the stage there, and as I said, we're, NVR is a home builder, and we are, look to partner with a lot of the, the community organizations, the neighbors of any project that we're involved with. You know, I, my job is to, to enter into a community and actually become part of that community, instead of the other way around, of creating somewhere that we invite others into and in the surrounding neighborhood. They've been there, they, they're the ones that have been here, so, you know, we've met with, I'll kind of get into it, but a few of the neighboring property owners, and continue to work with them, but, but definitely want to lay out what, what we've been discussing with them. So high level, location wise, this is, like I said, intersection of Bee's Ferry and Bear Swamp. As you can see, it's, it's within the urban growth boundary, and, you know, we feel that this location's fantastic in terms of existing infrastructure. You know, obviously, the urban growth boundary was put into place to limit the sprawl, limit the, you know, overburden on some of the rural areas. You know, we're not dragging water and sewer lines out to Hollywood, we're not dragging, you know, a lot of infrastructure out for a highly dense project. So the location here, we feel is fantastic, especially for the type of housing that we're looking to provide. Getting down a little deeper into kind of surrounding uses, the zoning of the site we're looking, looking at here is a PD, it's currently R4. You can kind of see across Bee's Ferry Road, there is a, the apartment complex going up right now, the commercial zoning district, there's the Hunt Club PUD industrial land. So as you move east along Bee's Ferry Road, it's, it's a obviously highly dense corridor, there's West Ashley Circle, obviously has a lot of the services and commercial that this area benefits from. Zooming in a little bit more, you can see the property, like I said, is surrounded by the Hunt Club Retail, which is recently constructed and completed to the east, and that has your retail offerings, veterinary offices, restaurants and such. To our north is the Lovely Hill Baptist Church, to our northwest is the Red Top Community up Bear Swamp Road, and to the south, there is the commercial zoning for the apartments. One thing I want to, you know, zoom in on and point to here is the, the church at the corner of Bear Swamp Road and Bee's Ferry Road. You can kind of see here, our, this property surrounds that church property, so actually there's no frontage for that church on Bear Swamp today. We've been meeting over the past year or so with that church, working to provide safer access to the church, as well as improved parking for the members of the church. Today, those folks do park on the, this is the Story Family Farm, so that the Stories property, and one of the first things that we discussed with that church is kind of the fact that they don't have, you know, rights to a parking area today, and they were concerned that this new PUD development would, would take that away from them. So we've been working with them, we are going to actually improve part of the parking area. It gets a little wet in there, it's pretty low at the intersection, so kind of lifting that up, putting some, some extra gravel out there and helping with the, the access and circulation for that, that church. And I'll drill down on that, as you can see the next. Here's the site plan, a lot of the items I was just discussing with you at the corner, you can kind of see the, right here. So this parking area today at the corner of Bear Swamp and Bee's Ferry is, like I said, relatively small, relatively low, a lot of water sits there when it rains, it's a big concern in this area, as well as the Red Top Community. So we've been working with these folks and trying to understand drainage patterns and make sure that this development doesn't negatively impact the water flow here. You can see there, the rear of the church, that's the Light of Christ Ministries Church at the corner, the rear portion of that, we are showing an access off of Bear Swamp Road, both to the residential community as well as access for the church. There's an existing project up Bear Swamp Road that, it's the Long Savannah, that has some existing turn lane infrastructure that's actually ongoing right now, there's a right turn lane going in Bee's Ferry Road onto Bear Swamp that is going to encroach onto the Light of Christ Ministries Church property, and actually, just an unsafe intersection on Saturdays and Sundays when those folks are, are accessing the church. It's a very difficult turn to either go in or out, and with this new infrastructure going in on the right turn, I believe it's only like 15 feet between the front of the building. building and that turn lane. So what we've been providing and proposing to that church is improved access from our internal street network into an enhanced parking area. And I do have letters from that church that I can distribute today, just in support of this, they're excited that we are kind of partnering with them. You know, the main goal is to kind of make them feel comfortable they've been here, like I said, just putting a 10-foot buffer around them and putting condos on top of them was not the goal. You can kind of see here, we're proposing some gathering area as well at the rear of the church property, on the farm property, but something that the church can use, as well as our residents. There's a youth ministry program that doesn't have a lot of space, doesn't have a lot of room for activity, and something that we feel is important, being good neighbors to that church. Part of the process here, we did conduct a traffic study, so our consultant is short engineering, and this study was completed and approved by the DOT. The recommended improvement for our property here was a eastbound left turn lane within the existing median of Bee's Ferry. It'll mirror the left turn lane, the westbound left, that's already installed for the apartments across the street to our south, with about 200 feet of storage there. And I'll drill down onto kind of each individual entrance, but there are two proposed entrances, the one full movement off of Bee's Ferry, and then another off of Bear Swamp, as you can see. So the main entrance here, as I said, is the full movement, and that proposed left will be there. One thing to note here, this improvement will be installed, and this will be written into our PUD document, this will be installed prior to any COs on any buildings, any residents moving in. So it's not a phased improvement that's going to be tied to the end of the community or anything of that nature, it will be installed up front before we have residents coming in and out of the community. And then over off of Bear Swamp, this, like I said, the access to the Light of Christ Church is kind of the red arrow. Still to be determined, we're continually meeting with them in terms of design and alignment, there's a wetland kind of off of Bear Swamp that is something that we need to work around and also permit through the Army Corps of Engineers. So design will be ongoing, but the agreement is to provide that access that will be safer for the church. And then the existing infrastructure and future infrastructure at that intersection is shown here, the right turn lane from Bee's Ferry onto Bear Swamp, as well as a right turn southbound on Bear Swamp to Bee's Ferry is under construction by the developers of Long Savannah. The utility concept plan here just shows you kind of how we plan to serve the site. We are working with Charleston Water, and there's existing water and sewer infrastructure nearby that we will tap into, and then stormwater drainage is shown here. The pond will be sized appropriately, we will work with Charleston County Stormwater as well as DES on the permitting of that in the stormwater here. And finally, open space, this property will provide 50% open space, that's about five acres, and it's detailed here of what that looks like. The buffer along Bee's Ferry Road will be 50 feet, we will maintain the existing buffer there, as well as enhance that to the Type B buffer with the plantings required in the ordinance. One thing to just note here as well, this internal circulation, we will have sidewalks on both sides of the road, as well as trails around the pond and connecting to the multi-use path in Bee's Ferry Road. You know, we feel this is a good, again, location for folks that might work nearby, might live nearby, that want to downsize, you know, people are looking to live near their relatives. I know a lot of older folks that have kids that can't afford to live in West Ashley, can't afford to live nearby their family, and, you know, we feel that this location's appropriate for the density that we've provided and the proposed, in order to keep that market rate housing priced attainably, as well as we are providing the workforce element here, which would be deed restricted. There's 5% of the units would be deed restricted as workforce. And any questions, we're happy to answer, and we appreciate your time this afternoon.
Mr. Palatos?
Yeah, so, quick question, these are condominiums that are available for purchase or rental units?
For sale, they're purchase only, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, sort it out between. Just a little bit more, and move on down.
Very busy development, I guess the impervious surface must be about close to 100%.
You said impervious surface?
Yes.
No, it will be under the ordinance regulations, I think it's about 50%. So we've been working with staff on impervious as well, yes, sir.
What, I'm sure this is a work in process, what are the proposed unit sizes and the square footage of each building?
Sure. Each building will have 24 units, four stories. Their size of each individual unit is about 1,200 to 1,500 square feet, all with two bedrooms and two bathrooms, and each having its own balcony. So these live, I mean, there's an interior corridor, there's elevator shaft access for each of the unit, in one elevator shaft of the lobby.
Okay. And as far as the deed restricted for workforce, what does that look like?
That is, that was the workforce is the 120% of AMI, so we would deed restrict those, I believe it's a period of 20 years on the deed restriction, and that would be managed through a third-party income verification service, but passed through the county as we sell those units. And kind of the goal is to also have, you know, the remainder of the units be, I say attainable, different, you know, different words for everything, but attainable meaning something that is, we're trying to figure out a missing middle price point here in West Ashley. Like I said, there's existing condos at Shadow Moss, there's existing new construction going up in 500, 600, 700,000s in this area. I live off of Church Creek here in West Ashley, and, you know, you just can't find this type of price point, this type of new construction price point, you know, probably a lot of resales, but folks just looking to live here, that don't want the maintenance, that don't want the yard, want the safety, then want to be near, you know, existing conveniences, you just can't find that.
So how many units would be workforce-like the number?
If, so 144 total, there would be seven of those would be deed restricted, and we would work with staff on where those are located. The, obviously, the exterior wouldn't look no different, interior finishes will be minor, but there will be some differences, but otherwise, yeah, you're not going to be able to, it's not a whole building that you're going to say, that's the workforce, these are the market rate, it'll be integrated into the community.
You've referenced price point a number of times, what do y'all project right now?
It's early, but I think the goal is to have, you know, upper 300,000s being the price point of the market rate. And like I said, there's different size units as well, so there could be in the low 400s as well, just with options, et cetera.
What common elements or limited common elements would y'all have?
Amenities here, we would have, there's a, we're proposing a dog park kind of off of, let me show you. Yeah, kind of off Bee's Ferry Road there in the front, you kind of see a dog park surrounded by those three buildings, kind of a small, small and large dog park. We're proposing, as you enter the community, kind of a community garden space, there will be kind of some garden plots there, so folks can, and, you know, trying to honor the legacy and history here, that the property owner is very involved, the Story Family, you know, Storybrooke Farm is an existing horse farm. You know, along Bee's Ferry Road, you've got the split rail white fencing, you know, you've got that kind of agricultural horse farm feel here. What we didn't want to do is come in here and just tear it all down and put up your apartments right on Bee's Ferry, right? So what we're trying to kind of maintain that aesthetic a little bit, that 50-foot buffer off of Bee's Ferry Road, we'll maintain that white split rail fencing, you'll be able to see that, kind of the horse, you know, stable look for the dog park and for the community gardens, and just common elements throughout the community to hark back to what the existing use is.
And I ask, I'm just curious, one issue that I see a lot is, you know, there's the affordability element on condos, or what appears to be affordable, and then you have regime fees that eat away at that. So when somebody goes to get financing, they might be paying 300,000 for a unit, but it's equivalent to them buying a $500,000 single-family home. So I guess what I'm getting at with the common elements, you know, what does that cost to upkeep, which is going to be passed through back to the owner, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's why, you know, you don't see the clubhouse and the pool, a lot of those common elements that tend to become a lot more expensive, or mechanical equipment, things like that that you have to maintain, you know. So again, early, but that is in our calculations and in something that we are very cognizant of with a monthly payment, you know, we've got to be able to be successful here and sell. So, you know, projecting something that, like you said, is on paper 300, but in reality 500, it wouldn't work for us. It's, the homeowner needs to be able to afford this, and again, that's something that we are cognizant of with our selection of amenities and limiting kind of some of those more expensive common elements, like a pool, is going to keep us a little lower here.
Okay.
I had a question if you would, please, you say that only seven of the 144?
5%. So, just an example, the 144 is our proposal here, yes, ma'am?
So if the going rate at opening is 300,000 and the market goes up to 5, then most of them would go up to 5, and it would no longer be affordable?
Are you speaking about the workforce housing element, or are you saying attainable?
Attainable housing, I mean, if only seven of the 144 are deed restricted, the rest of them just go with the market?
And, I mean, that's, the market will dictate, obviously, what those uses are, for sure, the price points are.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So following up on Commissioner Davis's question about the regime, the flood status, is this in the flood zone, will the development require flood insurance?
There's a portion of the property, most of it is an X, there's a portion in the AE zone that we will kind of work with FEMA on that as well, to lift the base flood out of that, it's an AE9. So during the engineering work, once we get into full design, we'll make sure that the property is out of the base flood elevation.
So you're anticipating the regime not having to acquire flood insurance?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Luke?
So a couple of questions. The first, why does the property not connect, or was there any attempt to connect to the adjacent property in the northeast of this one? And I know that there, so where that kind of horseshoe shape is, and Building 6 is kind of blocking, and I know that there's a dumpster there, but the connection would be?
Yeah, and we, so one of the first things we did was reach out to the Hunt Club Retail, it was already developed and installed, it, the topography, there's a retaining wall sitting right there as well, and the plan's never called for it, so they didn't plan for that.
Okay. And I would prefer for that road coming off of Bear Swamp Road to continue straight in line with the road that's at the rear of the property, was there a particular reason why that doesn't or can't occur?
Where are you?
So essentially where the retention pond is, the larger retention pond. So the road that comes off of Bear Swamp Road curves down towards Bee's Ferry Road, was that ever a study?
You just want to straighten that road out, as you're saying?
Well, and the questions will make more sense in a little bit. But was there any, because right now, it kind of doglegs back up, and then you have a dead end, you know, where that retention pond is, was there ever any, any different idea of road layout on the site?
We had a lot of iterations, I think there, at one point, yeah, we did kind of hug the road toward the northern property line. Stormwater really dictates a lot here of where we, we need a lot of detention on the site, and kind of that whole western portion is going to be crucial. So I guess the reason you're asking, you know, if it goes towards the north?
That's just the lower portion of the site, then, I guess?
Yeah, that's, that's...
The, where the retention ponds are.
It's draining towards that, kind of that wetland in the corner of Bear Swamp and the property. You can kind of see also the big drainage swath on the Lovely Hill Church direct to our north, so there's a lot of water running right through here. So part of our engineering studies and drainage study will be focused on this area, for sure. So there may be some tweaks in the road of where it is, just based on what's best for the land.
And then you mentioned road improvements, both what y'all are saying that you would provide at that, what appears to be in the main entrance, and then a future potential traffic signal at the Bear Swamp intersection. And SC DOT, I believe, maintains Bee's Ferry.
Yes.
What's the discussion been with them, because I know that they can be heavy-handed in terms of what they want to see? Were those recommendations from them, or are those just your proposals?
No, those are from DOT and approved through DOT with the study.
And so I appreciate the intent for, you know, adding more affordable housing. I would say that in the trial scenario as a whole between the county and municipalities, we all know that's an issue, and that's why we have these affordable housing funds and everything. I think the only way, though, that we'll be ultimately successful is if we have what you call, you know, missing middle housing. And that's not necessarily just condos, but duplex, triplex, quadplex. The difficulty, though, is trying to convince the general public of all of that. And so I try to make a distinction, of course, density helps with affordability issues because you're increasing the supply. But there is a distinction between good density and bad density. Bad density, I would argue, is 100% car-centric, and that tends for the public to be seen as well. Now I hate density because it's just increasing traffic. Was, so was there or is there, and I know this is a super convoluted question to ask because this is kind of more into your pro forma, but I would think that a better way of trying to address affordability for this site may be more in the types of units or the variety of units that are offered. So larger units would become more expensive, and smaller units would become less expensive. The way that it currently is, is kind of like that Tower Is In The Park concept, where you have these taller apartment buildings and, well, or condo buildings, but the typology is not too different, and then park around it, and it's extremely car-centric. And since this is the workshop, I, you know, I'm going to take a little bit of liberty here.
Sure.
If there was more of an attempt to keep the road at the rear, and then you offer a mixing of building types, and again, I know that's your pro forma, and I know that's probably more driven by NVR as a company as a whole, but to have like a condo building and then duplexes, or finding probably your pro forma requires that 144 units, the better way to allow the free market to give those varied costs and to potentially make this a more palatable project, I think, in the future, moving, if you proceed with the PUD, would be achieving that mixture in housing or residential types, so that, the concern I think I'm hearing from the commission, and I think that you'll hear in the future, is that 5% amount of affordable housing type, or housing units, being deed restricted for 20 years, obviously, once that 20 years is up, that goes away. But something where you're mixing the different housing types... you're mixing the different housing types, so that you can achieve that affordability from a free market perspective, and potentially get, because I was concerned too about HOA dues and assessments, like the roof may need to be replaced, and that can be a big one-time hit, especially on someone that you're saying that they're paying a more affordable rate, so that's just my two cents, I know that this, the area as you approach 17 may become more dense, so that it's less car-reliant in the future, and so this might make more sense, but it's part of the reason that West Ashley Circle has kind of been limping along and not quite been the view that it was originally, is that, you know, it is all car-centric, and you are running into the flooding issues, and it's not called Bear Swamp Road for no reason, so, but I'll kind of leave it at that, so.
Appreciate that, good insight, thank you.
Anybody else?
My only advice would be to come in and pitch something being affordable, I'd almost rather someone come in and just own it and say, we're developing condos, and we're going to sell them at market rate, and we're going to give 5%, you know, to deed restrictions, I think that approach is better, in my opinion, like as the person being presented to, than doing the whole pitch about affordability, but that's my two cents.
So, are you saying you don't think, you want them to take out the affordability?
I don't, I think they're just saying, I don't think it is very much below market value, I mean, I think, for the area.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Market value.
That's market value.
Yeah. Okay, Jamal Wright, is he here?
Good afternoon, I'm Jamal Wright, I'm the Vice President of the Red Top Improvement Association, I also have Dr. Dover here, she's the President of the Association, and we just had a few things that we wanted to go on record as concerns, we met with Taylor and Braden in January at Lovely Hill Church, and they were very forthcoming with what their plans were, however, one thing I do want to note is while they have been working with Light of Christ Church for a long basis, the overall community, this was our first meeting with them, so as a community as a whole, we do not support this project, and a lot of the reasons we don't support this project is things that you just asked about, the flooding on the north side, Lovely Hill Church, that road can't go there because that church already floods, that property is already low, that was a major concern for the church members, which is where we had the meeting with them, and then another concern, the Bear Swamp Road entrance, we also had concerns of, as a community, with the traffic density, just like you asked, because that intersection is already hard to get in and out, and then also, now with the apartments, as he said, opening, and now this is going to be a major four-lane, four-way intersection with apartments entering, the new plan entering from one side, and it's just going to be impossible traffic, so these are some of the things, and then also, one of the things we brought up to them was this, some of the things that we already do in our community, Labor Day parades and things like that, that they failed to interact with the community to see how this would affect us as a community, so while he's saying the West Ashley community, he overlooked the Red Top community, he talked to further up the road Hunt Club, and then he was dealing with Light of Christ, but never entered into the actual heart of the community where they want to disturb the road and things like that, so these are some of the concerns we had, and this is why the community as a whole does not support this project, thank you.
Okay. All right, nobody else signed up to speak? No other questions or comments from the commission members? There's no further discussion from commission members, this Planning Commission workshop stands adjourned, the Planning Commission will hold a meeting on Monday, March 10th, 2025, beginning with the annual meeting at noon in the committee room, followed by the regularly scheduled commission meeting at 2:00 PM in council chambers, lunch will be served. Okay.[1786.61]